Good evening. Welcome to the regular twice monthly meeting of Westminster's mayor and common council. Please note that our meetings, although open to the public here at City Hall, will continue to be available and streamed live on the city's YouTube page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. Now, we begin as we do every meeting with the pledge of the flag, followed by a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As a courtesy to everyone, please take a moment to silence your cell phones or any other electronic devices you have that might ring or beep or otherwise during the meeting. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on this city's website. And I believe we have some hard copies of the agenda here in the front of the room for anybody in the audience. Tonight, we're pleased to have Dr. Richard Smith with us from McDaniel College. Dr. Jaskin, when she took over, promised us a couple of months ago that she was going to have a representative at the college here whenever she could, and that they would give us a little report on what's happening at the college and take back some information on what's going on in the city. So, Dr. Smith, anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
Sure. Thank you for having me. And just to share, you probably know this already, we had our commencement this past Saturday. Separated it. We had the graduate students in the morning and the undergraduates in the afternoon. It was a great event. Of course, a lot of happy people. And we're excited for them, and we're just getting ready now for the incoming freshman.
Great. Well, thank you very much, and we're looking forward to helping welcome the incoming freshman class later this year. Now, we'll have approval, we'll consider the approval of the minutes. We have minutes for the meeting of the mayor and common council on May 9th, 2022, and the council's special meeting of May 12th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve? But a motion by Mr. Kavachi, is there a second?
Second.
They're going to motion, a second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Thank you. Next item is on the agenda is presentations to the council. And we will go now for a presentation on the budget by our city administrator. Ms. Imhols?
Thank you, sir. Presentation will come up on the screen.
While we're waiting on note that we had a presentation on the budget at our last regular meeting, followed by a council work session on the budget. So, we've already had a considerable opportunity as a council to discuss the budget with the city administrator, and we want to do one more presentation here this evening before we wrap it up.
Dick, if we just pull it up without going, sharing our screen, I think that should be fine for now. We'll give a verbal presentation to those that are listening. All right, so mayor and council, the budget is, as you see on the agenda before you tonight, I just want to quickly walk through, next slide, please, the bones of the budget, the background of the budget. As we've discussed before, in Maryland, real property is reassessed on a triennial basis with the increase faced over those three years. In Westminster, we are in the second year of that three-year assessment phase in for fiscal year 23. So, this upcoming budget that's before you today is the second year of that three-year assessment phase in. This budget before you presents a net assessable base increase of approximately 58.1 million or 2.95 from the prior year. We'll discuss this a little further in the agenda tonight under the constant yield. Next slide, please. There are a few drivers that helped outline the budget itself this year for fiscal year 23. The first and most important perhaps is that there's no change in real property tax. The property tax rate in the fiscal year 23 budget that's before you today has the tax rate of 56 cents per $100 of assessed value. That's the same tax rate as last year and the same rate for the past 10 years. There is an increase in the water sewer rates, which were adopted in May 2018. That's a five-year plan. This is the last year of that. The increase for water is 3.5%, and the increase for sewer rates, 5%. The fiscal year 23 budget also includes funding for a new water and sewer rate study, which will set the rates moving forward in the future. And as we all know, the consumer price index increased 8% from March 21 to March 22, and there are already places in the budget where we felt that increase. The fiscal year 23 budget reflects that. And finally, Carroll County increased their recycling tipping fees by 84% from $30 per tonne to $50 per tonne. The fiscal year 23 budget includes that. Next statement, or next slide, rather. So, just as a quick recap, the budget is how we implement our vision for the city. The vision statement is as follows. Westminster is a safe, healthy, and engaged community where new ideas and sustainable innovation enhance the community's quality of life and create economic opportunities for today's residents and for future generations. The mayor and council have adopted, next slide, a strategic plan that outlines five critical success factors. Those factors are strong partnerships and engaged community, water and sewer capacity for future generations, economic activity and growth, responsible stewardship of city resources, and a safe and livable community. So, the budget reflects programs and activities that support those critical success factors as outlined in the strategic plan. Next slide. Including, to further the critical success factor of strong partnerships and engaged community, the fiscal year 23 budget includes initiatives to continue our partnership with the downtown business community and with our partners at McDaniel College and Carroll Community College. We have money in the budget, in the fiscal year 23 budget, to move forward with our Pure Water Westminster project in order to ensure water capacity for future generations. And there's funding for our inflow and infiltration mitigation project in order to ensure sewer capacity for future generations. And to promote economic activity and growth, we've got funds in the fiscal year 23 budget for a downtown parking study, as well as an initiative to update our sign code and zoning code. Next slide. So that we can, to meet the critical success factor in the strategic plan related to responsible stewardship of city resources, we've got items in the budget to help attract and retain quality workforce, to upgrade certain lighting to LED, to ensure the appropriate maintenance of existing infrastructure, to implement the Wakefield Valley Park master plan, and to seek alternative funding sources. And finally, to ensure a safe and livable community, the fiscal year 23 budget includes a project to connect Wakefield Valley Community Trail with the Westminster Community Trail, upgrade our rental property licensing program, and continue to enhance recruiting and retention efforts for public safety positions. Next slide. So, the budget has six funds. The general fund, which outlines our core services and administrative functions. The public housing fund, which uses funding from HUD to administer the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Capital project funds, which accounts for all capital improvement program activities. The water fund, which ensures production, treatment, and distribution of potable water. The sewer fund, which of course involves a collection and delivery of sewage for treatment and disposal, and the fiber fund, which involves the construction and operation of the Westminster Fiber Network. Next slide. As you can see, the fiscal year 23 budget is a balanced budget. When I say balanced, we look at not using too much reserves, not expecting too much from the business community or the residents, and making sure that we're also putting items in for the staff so that we can ensure that we are retaining a quality workforce and that we're able to attract quality workforce. Next slide. Here are the highlights. These are the exciting components to the fiscal year 23 budget for the mayor and council to consider. There is an increase in the grant to Magic from $80,000 to $100,000 to support their economic development efforts. There is an increase in the grant to the Westminster Municipal Band from $5,000 to $7,000. The grant increased to the heart of the Civil War from $6,500 to $7,200. There's also $250,000 to support the efforts with the Westminster Volunteer Fire Department. And the fiscal year 23 budget includes three new employees, equipment operators in the Streets Department, as well as an ample opportunity to thank the employees for their hard work, including 2% merit for non-sworn employees, step increases for sworn officers per the salary plan, 1% cola for all employees, and a 4% one-time bonus in fiscal year 23 for all employees. There are a variety of costs to the city. Next slide. That the city will have to absorb in this year's budget, which includes a 2% increase in health insurance, a small increase in the pension contribution rate for our non-sworn staff. Again, these are city contributions. A small increase in the LEOPS contribution rate for the sworn officers, and then a minor 1% increase in the workers' comp renewal rates. Next slide. We have a robust capital improvement program this year, which includes historic clock tower restoration, equipment replacement at the water plant, our ongoing enhanced nutrient reduction or ENR project at the wastewater facility, replacement of the water main at 27, ongoing renovation of the city's municipal pool, our paving schedule, vehicle acquisition. Next slide. Replacement of the roofs at 45 West Main and Carroll Arts Center, replacement of some boilers at 45 West Main, side rock repair at the Green Street Bridge, engineering for the relocation of the Streets Department facility, water main replacement at Main Street, HVAC upgrades at the Armory Community Center, and my favorite item on this list, enhanced holiday decorations, where we intend to wrap the trees in the downtown area from the fall through the spring in white holiday lights. Well, I guess they're not holiday, in white lights, and also have some speakers downtown to, so we can pipe music, holiday music, or any music really, through the downtown area. So, we're really excited about that and the new opportunities that may come from that. Mr. President, that concludes, oh wait, sorry, that does not, let me say one more. More opportunities to make some, to thank the staff that was involved in preparing this budget. It's a significant undertaking by the city's management team and other members of the staff, and I just want to take a moment. This is my first year putting this budget together. I haven't even been here for a year, so this was a team effort. And that included, of course, our Director of Public Works, Jeff Glass, Director of Housing and Services, Eric Brown, our Human Resources Director, Eltore McCullough, Director of Recreation Parks, Abby Gruber, our Director of Planning, Community Development, Mark Depot, our Police Chief, Tom Ledwell, Deputy Public Works Director, who we have here tonight with us, John Dick, our Streets Department Superintendent, Steve Strasberg, Utility Superintendent, Corey Stauffer, Sewer Department Superintendent, Matt Summerhill, Water Department Superintendent, Brett Grossnickel, my executive assistants, Samantha Schlitzer, and our City Clerk, Doug Barber. And of course, we could not have done this without the assistance of Krista Gardner from S E K, who's serving right now as our interim finance director. She provided invaluable assistance in that process and in this budget process. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Imhols. Let me just say on behalf of Finance Committee, pleasure working with you and your team through the budget process. I think we had some good conversations about what the city's priorities need to be for the coming year and where we were going to find the resources to meet them. I'm very pleased with the outcome. I think we've got a very strong budget here that's going to do well for the city over the next year and continue to to position us for the future, both financially and in terms of the city's infrastructure and services that we provide to our citizens, not least of which are clean water, you know, consumer facilities and good public safety protection. So, very pleased about all that. I want to thank my colleagues on the Finance Committee, the mayor, Dr. Becker and Mr. Hoff for the time that we spent with you, you know, going over all this, as well as my colleagues for the, I think, really good conversation we had during the budget workshop about all of these issues. I think we were able to use that time wisely to dig into some of these important issues, and I think that as a result, the budget is somewhat stronger document, and I think we're more prepared. So, with that, I ask, do any of my colleagues have any questions for the city administrator or any other comments they'd like to make at this time? We will be, we will have, this will be coming up later on the agenda as well for discussion. Sure. Dr. Becker, I would note is, just had her new replace, she's not here with us in person, but she is with us virtually. Mayor, anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time. I would like to, you know, if anything, I'd like to echo your comments on the process of putting a bunch together and, you know, kudos and much thanks to Ms. Imhols and the staff that she recognized in the undertaking of this. I know that there's a lot of new staff in the administrative services in the city without a finance director, Ms. Imhols only being at the helm of the city for about seven months. I think it was a really huge undertaking, and the document that has been developed, I think, is better than ones that I've seen in the past while I've been on the council. So, I'll leave it at that and save other comments for later.
Very good. Thank you. All right. So, with that, that ends the presentation. We'll move on now to our public hearing. We are required by law to do a public hearing on the constant yield tax rate for fiscal year 2023. Public hearings in the city of Westminster are conducted by the mayor, so I will virtually turn the gavel over to the mayor, and I'll assist her as necessary during the public hearing since I'm here. But, mayor, you're in charge.
Right. You can hear me, Mr. President?
We can.
Great. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I now call the public hearing to order and note that the time is 7:17 PM. Notice that this hearing was properly published in the Carroll County Times on Sunday, May 15th, 2022, meeting all state of Maryland requirements. The hearing has been called for the purpose of inviting public comment on the city of Westminster's property tax rate. In accordance with state law, I will now read the following required statement. "The mayor and common council of the city of Westminster proposes to increase real property taxes. For the tax year beginning July 1, 2022, the estimated real property real property assessable base will increase by 2.95% "If the city of Westminster maintains the current tax rate of .56% per $100 of assessment, real property tax revenues will increase by 2.95%, resulting in $325,366 of new real property tax revenues. In order to fully offset the effect of increase in assessment, the real property tax rate should be reduced to 0.5440 cents, the constant yield tax rate. The city of Westminster is considering not reducing its real property tax rate enough to fully offset increasing assessments. The city of Westminster proposes to adopt a real property tax rate of 56 cents per $100 of assessment. This tax rate is 2.95% higher than the constant yield rate and will generate $325,366 in additional property tax revenues. Of course, it is important to note that the actual tax rate will remain the same as it has for several years at .56% per $100 of assessment. But since this rate will bring in additional revenue beyond the city, sorry, beyond the amount the city collected in previous years, we are required to hold this hearing. If you would like to be heard on the matter, please raise your hand. I will ask the council president to recognize you, and then I will recognize everyone to be heard. Please state your name and address for the clerk. Is there anyone that would like to be heard?
Mayor, no one has asked to be heard.
Seeing no speakers, I now declare this public hearing closed, and the time is 7:19 PM. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Move on now to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar for approval. Mayor, a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Then a motion by Mr. Dayhoff, is there a second? But a second by Mr. Kavachi. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved. Now, we'll turn back to the mayor for her report. Dr. Becker.
All right. Thank you, Council President Pecorero. I don't have anything very much to report tonight. Just to reiterate, as we wrap up the budget processing, the budget process this evening, I think the document that's been put together is really fantastic. And again, we'll have a chance to talk about that a little bit later as we go forward to adopt the budget for the fiscal year 23. As the council president mentioned last Wednesday, so just five days ago, I did have my left knee replaced, which is why I'm not at the meeting. However, I am looking forward to Memorial Day weekend that's coming up and other events that are, be taking place in the city over the next couple of weeks, where I'll be much more comfortable getting around than I was in the past year. So, thank you, Mr. President. I'll just turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Becker. Now, turn to our reports from standing committees. We'll begin with Mr. Dayhoff, our liaison to the Carroll County Arts Council Board. Mr. Dayhoff?
Grade programming continues at the Arts Council. And I want to be sure to call to the common council's attention that Caroline and I are sponsoring Clifford the Big Red Dog, the movie, at Carroll Community College, coming up later part in June. My kids watched Clifford the Big Red Dog over and over and over again, so I think it's only appropriate that I sponsor that movie. That's my complete report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Economic and Community Development Committee, Mr. Hoff.
Mr. President, I will mention a couple of different things. Number one, we are meeting, our committee is meeting this Thursday at 3:30 PM at 45 West Main. I think we're going to start to work through some of our bucket list items as staff has nothing pressing on the agenda otherwise. I also wanted to just kind of mention in relation to economic development, at last week's Planning and Zoning Commission, we approved Phase Two, I'm on Planning and Zoning as the ex officio. We approved Phase Two of the Westminster Station project, which you all know is redevelopment of the old Len Stoller site at the corner of Route 140 and Center Street. We approved a new retail center, which is a little under 37,000 square feet, and a new Outback Steakhouse location. I must also commend the developer at our Planning and Zoning staff. Phase, I'm sure you all are well aware of Phase One, has turned out to be a really highly attractive and modern-looking retail development. And from the looks of the plans for Phase Two, I don't think you all will be disappointed with that phase as well. And while we always need to be business-friendly and reasonable when dealing with developers, I think part of the reason we're getting some really highly attractive results on the commercial projects that are currently under construction throughout town, because I'm sure several of you have noticed, you know, we now have Phase Two of Westminster Station that'll probably be starting in the fall or later this year. We have the new Len Stoller site going on. We also have the redevelopment of the old Ruby Tuesday site as well. And I don't know if you've noticed, particularly I've noticed with the Ruby Tuesday site, now that it's being built, the old Ruby Tuesday site that's being redeveloped, you know, how attractive that is. And a lot of that hard work kind of is a testament to our planning staff with working with the developers to kind of really see that we as a city get the best possible-looking, you know, projects. So, I really commend, you know, when we have quality developers that we're working with, and also Mr. Depot and his staff on really trying really hard to make sure that when we see some of these projects coming about, that it's a real asset to the community in the long run. So, I just kind of wanted to mention that as well, because it's sort of on the economic development front. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. On behalf of the Finance Committee, I will report that, of course, the budget is the main item that we've been working on, and it is forced tonight, the final adoption. And I think we've said all that we need to say about that for the moment. We'll have a little more conversation about it in a few minutes. Personnel Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
Just wanted to comment that the Personnel Committee will be starting to gear up and work on the employee handbook, but in addition, we have several numerous positions that are open right now and available. The Comprehensive Planner One and Comprehensive Planner Two, which would be known as the Main Street Manager, Director of Finance, Property Inspector, Entry Level and Lateral Police Officer positions, Family Fitness Center Attendant, a Recreation Program Coordinator, and Summer Camp and Lifeguard positions, along with, if none of those interest you, then, and wastewater might be a fit for you, then we also have Third Shift Plant Operator for one and two positions. Please check out our website. Full descriptions of those jobs and applications are available.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Kavachi, Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of brief things. The paving contractor has wrapped up their paving for the year. However, they are going to come back and do a little stretch on Bond and Chase.
Are you doing Public Works first?
Oh, did I get this backwards?
We're doing Public Works first.
Some already into it.
That's all right.
Sorry about that. Got a both here on my screen. And the, yeah, the chief's going to be outrunning a dozer and, you know, all that.
I'm not sure he's properly licensed for that, but we'll, we'll watch.
So, they'll be back to fix up the area over there where the water main break occurred and a lot of pavement was destroyed, so they can come back and repair a section of that street over there in the Bond and Chase, the George area. They've, they're opening bids for the Route 27 water line replacement that's over Haunt Tuck on the 23rd, so that was today. So, I'm sure we'll hear something about that. And then they're also working on a lot of requests for bids for the, in advance for fiscal year 23. That's it, Mr. President, for Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. And would you please report on Public Safety?
Yes, I can. Thank you. The chief held his monthly focus group, the community focus group, get together, and they went over the body worn camera system and the policies related to it, chief. I don't know if you're going to elaborate on that at all, but that's probably something, you know, pretty apropos, timing-wise, to get more information out to the public, since more and more, if not all of our officers at this point are wearing them. The chief also attended the Quarterly Opioid Prevention Coalition meeting, where he continues to be a leader there, and they're doing lots of good things. And he's had numerous meetings subsequent to that meeting, where he's working to leverage some of those relationship opportunities that are derived out of those meetings. The department conducted the final phase of the promotion process, and proud to say that Sergeant Tim Reif has has been promoted to the rank of Lieutenant effective May 24th, so that'll be tomorrow. So, congratulations to him, and that's another person in your command staff. I'm sure you're glad to have joining you. The, there was an arrest made. I know we, at least on council, had a little email that had went around about a burglar over Westmoreland, and that, I think that was out in the public as well. They did make an arrest on that, so kudos to the detectives. It did good work tracking down the stolen jewelry that was pawned, and they have, like I said, they made an arrest, which is great work. And then lastly, the department has made an offer to a new dispatcher, Gina Bowers, and she'll be starting as a 911 dispatcher on June 7th. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Recreation of Parks, Mr. Dayhoff.
We have a meeting coming up later in the week. We've got a couple of exciting ideas that have been brought forward by citizens for a pocket park. And we'll look forward to getting an update on the progress of the pool. And I guess the next festival we're looking forward to is the Beer and Barbecue Stroll. Is that on June 18th? So, that'll be my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. And I have nothing to report from the Technology Committee, except that now that Ms. Imhols is, you know, past the budget, we'll look forward to scheduling a meeting to, you know, start thinking of some of those issues. Looking forward to either coming with recruitment or the new director for that department and something that we can prepare as well. Thank you all. So, now we'll move on to council comments. This is an opportunity for council members to mention anything that doesn't come under a committee report or elsewhere, appear on the agenda. Begin with Mr. Kavachi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one brief thing. Myself, Councilman Hoff, and Councilwoman Gilbert had an opportunity to attend the First Responder Appreciation Day last Wednesday. It had, that event started as a dinner, where it was, you know, kind of a formal thing, and you had your first responders there, and they And you had, you had your first responders there and they'd get different awards and you'd bring them up and, you know, they would have accolades for them. And, and it was really nice. Covid changed all that and it became a kind of a, an event where instead of having a dinner. Uh, groups of us went out to the first responders at their locations and delivered food, uh, lunch in particular. And some gift, you know, basket with some goodies and things like that. And that really seems to be a huge hit and it looks like that's going to be what this is going to be morphed into going forward. And just very briefly, it's, it's really a neat thing because what it typically consists of is usually an elected official or someone in some type of. Leadership position within government. And then a couple of members of the community that are active, uh, that are, are recovered addicts. That are in most cases seem to be working in the field, helping other addicts. And we go out to the first responders. Uh, in my case, we went to the detention center, met with some of the guards there this year. And the two folks that came with us told their story about how they got into recovery. Uh, through, uh, the help of first responders. In one lady's case, uh, she was Narcan when she was overdosing. Um, the first responder saved her life. She has now subsequently had a child that, like she said, wouldn't be here if it wasn't for that happening ten years ago. And she has now worked for the past seven years in, uh, for a company that helps other addicts. And so it's an amazing success story. I'm sure you guys heard similar things. It's, I think, my second or third time doing it. It's always very emotional and the first responders really, um, they really respond well, uh, to that event. I, I think most of them take it to heart that, they, they don't give a rat's behind that we're there, that we're, we're, we're just in the way. It's really about the first responders have an opportunity to interact with the folks that were former addicts that are now recovered. And hearing their story, and that's what the neat part of it is. So, um, that, that was a wonderful event and just wanted to share it with the group as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Uh, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I wanted to, um, to reinforce what, uh, Mr. Cavaci said. And actually, Mr. Cavaci, we really do appreciate that elected officials come, um, and show an interest in the event and show an interest in, in the work that we do. Um, I had to work on the farm that day and I couldn't, uh, attend, but I got a lot of really good feedback. That folks really appreciated, um, uh, the recognition event and I really like it. Um, we do things like that really well in our community. I participated in the, um, uh, the Drug Prevention, uh, vigil that the state's Attorney's Office, um, puts together every year. And, uh, it just highlights, um, how well that we're trying to get our arms around. Uh, folks that, that need a helping hand with, um, with a drug addiction. Um, I also worked very hard many years ago in a previous capacity, um, on the budget. I know how hard it is and I really appreciated all the work of the city administrator. It's a lot of work. Um, I really appreciated all the hard work on that, that, uh, the city administrator and the staff. And the Finance Committee did, uh, to put that together. I think it's an excellent budget and I think it really does reflect, uh, the values of our community. Mr. President, that's my report, thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Ms. Gilbert.
Um, I have several things. First, uh, it seemed like the last two weeks were extremely busy. I, I don't know what it was, but the last two weeks, at least in my calendar, were, um, quite crazy. Um, first was on May eleventh, um, I attended the Opioid Prevention Coalition Meeting, um, with the chief. Uh, it was very well attended. Um, Ms. Debbie Finch did an absolutely wonderful job, um, had several resources, um, there along with, um, the substance abuse. And now I need to put my glasses on. The Substance Abuse and Mental Health, um, Services Administration just released an app. Um, called Talk They Hear You. Um, this app is for parents and caregivers, um, to prepare them for some important conversations for the kids about alcohol and other drugs. Um, they handed out some great literature, some of which I have with me. Um, but folks, um, can obviously use those resources. Um, there's a lot of great things out there regarding that. Um, and I'm sure the chief may also get into some other information. On the same line, um, Councilman, um, Cavaci also mentioned, um, the three of us who attended the First Responder Appreciation Day. Uh, it was also, um, a great afternoon. The weather was terrific. Um, I went along with my partner to Pleasant Valley Fire Hall. And, um, unfortunately, most of the, the folks at the fire hall were called out on two separate calls. So we only were able to get to two of the folks that were at the fire department. But it was, um, it was really interesting to talk with, um, with the, the person that I was with. Um, and she too, um, was a recovering addict. She now has a child. She works as a peer support specialist, helping other people, um, with recovery. Um, I just want to say thank you to all of the first responders, whether they're police department. Um, uh, whether they're police officers, fire department. Um, I know it gets really, really frustrating sometimes, um, returning and going back to the same calls over and over again. Um, kind of, it sometimes feels like you beat your head against the wall, but there's always that one time that it works. And you never know if it's at the front side or the backside, but it's that one time that works. And that one time not only saves that person, um, but it saves their family, their parents, their siblings, their children, their future children. Um, and it changes lives forever. It's a ripple effect that, that is totally immeasurable. So to all of, to everyone out there who's a first responder, um, I hope they enjoyed their lunch and thank you. Um, on May eighteenth, there was a first inaugural veteran celebration at the Farm Museum. It was also very impressive. Um, Carroll County Government put on a very nice, um, uh, event. And there are lots of resources available for all the veterans in our county. Um, then on Saturday, um, several of us were, um, saying goodbye to Ms. Bonnie from the Boys and Girls Club. As she embarks on a great new chapter in her life, um, and all the great work. I wanted to say, say thank you to her for all the great work she has done for the Boys and Girls Club in Westminster. Um, and then on May seventeenth was the first, um, cleanup and freshen up day of Bell Grove Square. So a huge thank you went to Crossroads Church and Justin's Place Guys who helped with that. And also our Streets Department, because they marched. Um, it really did look absolutely great. I walk through it almost every day and it is nice refreshed and trimmed up. And on May twenty-first, I participated in the cleanup of the Ellsworth Cemetery. Um, nine veteran headstones were installed as well as a general cleanup for the entire, um, cemetery. Um, there is going to be, I think in June, a dedication ceremony. I do not have the exact date yet. Um, learned how to install a tombstone. Never thought that would be something I'd learn, but now I know how to install a tombstone. Not that I want to do it for myself yet, but hey.
It'd be tough to do.
Yeah, it would be. I don't know, let's do it at that time, never mind. And anyway, from that, I would just wondered if we knew any updates on, um, on the annex, annexing of the cemetery.
We are waiting to, for, actually, let's let Mr. Debo answer that question.
Um, there is, uh, private sector effort, effort out there, um, both through attorneys and engineering firms to submit an annexation petition. Because we're just waiting for the petition to be submitted, so we can start processing it.
Perfect.
Good.
All right, and that's all I have, there's Kelly.
Sorry.
All right, very good, thank you, uh, Ms. Gilbert, Mr. Hoff.
Okay, I, I will have a, uh, just a couple of comments. Um, I, as well participated, as, uh, the other council members said, in the First Responders Appreciation Day. That was a really neat experience. That was obviously my first time participating. Um, and I was lucky enough to be, uh, sent to our very own Westminster Police Department, which was great. And I was partnered with, uh, some people from Matty's House, with the local super house for women in Westminster. And one thing that I thought was kind of a testament to who we are as a council and also as a city. Uh, you know, uh, I know, Mr. President, I believe you were away. Uh, Mayor, uh, was having surgery. Um, Kevin was unavailable that day, but I suspect we could have even had more of a turnout. Uh, among the elected officials. And without going into details, I will say, uh, we far surpassed, uh, some, the other municipalities as far as a, a presence. Um, and I think that's a real testament to the, the kind of caring, uh, and the kind of innovative. Work we do here in the city, we're trying to deal with these kind of problems. So, um, that was really nice to see as well. And it, and it was very, um, hearing, you know, the peoples from Matty House's personal stories of recovery stories is very moving. Um, and, uh, it was just a great experience. Um, also, I wanted to mention, just to kind of close the loop, I had sent you all an email. Uh, but I, I, I want to close the loop officially on this. On May sixteenth, the Gov- Governor Hogan signed his fiscal year, uh, capital budget bill. Uh, which means that our state funding, uh, for one million towards Wakefield Valley. And the two hundred thousand towards the clock tower, as well as I believe Ms. Imholtz and Ms. Rimmer had money in there related to the municipal pool. Is now all official. And what I was really impressed with by this, this whole process is the teamwork that we all collectively did together. As far as on council, on staff, with working with our delegation. Our delegation was very supportive, very appreciative of Senator Reedy and Delegate Craig, Shoemaker, Rose. Uh, and the governor's office was very helpful, uh, throughout the whole process. Um, it was fantastic to see that all come together, uh, that Westminster is getting some state funding. Um, and I, I'm already laying track with Senator Reedy, uh, that we're going to hit him up again in fiscal year twenty-four. And so far, he's still answering my phone calls. Um, so maybe as we get into the summer, uh, I think we're talking about having a summer work session. I think that, that maybe we can collectively talk about what, what maybe we would, what our ask would maybe be for, uh, the next fiscal year. Because I believe the earlier we start thinking about this stuff, the more important, um, or the more likely to have success. Because I, I know even during the campaign when I was running last May is when Senator Reedy and I first started trying, uh, first started talking. About the idea of, of trying really hard to, uh, get some items in the capital budget, uh, for Westminster. So I think the earlier we start, the better. So maybe this summer, we can all collectively kind of put our heads together and kind of come up with a plan like we did this year. Uh, and try to get some additional funding for, uh, next year, which I know will make Ms. Imholtz very happy. Because she, as well as I, always like when we're getting, uh, uh, money from other sources. So, anyway, that's it, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Hoff. Uh, just very briefly, um, me, uh, first, I just want to, um, on behalf of all of us, express our condolences to Ms. Gilbert. Also, father, he was a distinguished municipal, municipal attorney himself, well known in Maryland. And, uh, his passing has lost all of us, as well as his family, so thank you very much. Uh, also, I just wanted to note that I was also, you know, able to attend, uh, Ms. Schuller's. You know, a going away party, it was a nice event. I was glad to see so many folks from the community there who have benefited, you know, um, you know, from her guidance. As well as those who have been benefactors of the Boys and Girls Club. It was a very nice event. Um, and finally, I just want to say that I had the opportunity, uh, a couple of days ago, uh, to get to, uh, visit with. Our next congressman, Congressman Dutch Ripper's Burger, uh, who will be, uh, representing us, uh, after the next elections, presumably, you know. And, um, you know, just had a good chance to chat with him about, uh, about Westminster and about his, his, the new part of his district. And, uh, want to say that he was, uh, looking forward, um, to representing us and is also, um, looking forward to helping us. With issues that, that we may have up this way. And, um, of course, he is a senior member of the House Appropriations Committee. So I think that, uh, as a, as a senior appropriator, he's well positioned to, uh, be helpful to the city. In terms of some of these kinds of, uh, requests that Ms. Imholtz has been, uh, working on. So, um, you know, again, we're, we're looking forward to, uh, you know, as much help as we can, we can get in that regard. Um, that's all I have. Uh, move on now to, um, uh, bids is our next item. We have one item under bids, uh, one of a contract for the Route twenty-seven Water Main Replacement Project. And I presume that, uh, with, uh, Mr. Glass.
Yes, sir. The, uh, this year capital project spend includes funding for the replacement of an existing twelve inch water main. Which parallels Route twenty-seven and it's pretty much from the ends of, uh, Haunt Road to, uh, to Tuck Road. This project was advertised on April twenty-fifth with the pre-bid, pre-bid meeting and bid due dates of May third and May seventeenth respectively. Uh, the design work will occur over the next six months, including in fiscal year twenty-three. We've got three proposals with the lowest being from Whitman Recard on associates for WRA. But the, uh, the three bids came in, um, as follows. WRA at a hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. GMB at a hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars, ninety-eight cents. An EBA engineering at two hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. City staff has reviewed and evaluated the references, proposals from WRA in the total amount of one thirty-three, seven ninety-four. Finds it to be acceptable with regard to the city's needs. With regard to project funding, it's, uh, in the fiscal year twenty-three budget, a total amount of two million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Which includes, of course, the construction as well. At this point, we would recommend that the mayor and council accept a bid of WRA, the Baltimore, Maryland. And not to exceed that, but a thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. For the engineering and design of the Route twenty-seven Water Main Replacement Project, as further described in the bid documents. And of course authorize the mayor's execution of the associated contract. Any questions, if there are any?
All right, thank you, Mr. Glass. All right, uh, let's get a motion on, uh, the table to, uh, be able to deal with this. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
Motion, motion to approve.
A motion by Mr. Dayhoff and a second by Ms. Gilbert. Um, and Mr. Dayhoff, you're sitting on the floor, I think.
I'm sorry?
You wanted to?
No, I just wanted a motion to approve, so we could discuss.
All right, anyone else have any comments or questions for Mr. Glass?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavaci.
So, Mr. Glass, the, this is for the engineering portion of it. Is this in line with what we've allocated out of that two and a half million dollars?
It's actually a little less, the one thirty-three is a little less than, uh, that I had anticipated. But, uh, uh, we've done significant work with, uh, Whitman Recard before and, uh, have, um, no feeling that, uh, that they can't do the work. They absolutely can.
And are we, are we going to try to, uh, to get this whole project done in twenty-three? Is that, is that the plan?
That's the plan.
And you think we're safe at that two point four, given?
I don't know more once we get the, uh, the engineering work complete and we'll have an engineer's estimate, but, uh, I, I think it's a good number.
That's fine, this is not your problem.
I wasn't going to say that.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Ms. Imholtz.
Um, we're actually planning to get this project completed by the end of September, which will be in fiscal year twenty-four. So within the fiscal, the fiscal year of the federal government. So just a couple of months shy of the end of fiscal year twenty-three.
Right, okay, very good, thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Hoff. Yes, um, I believe, uh, Mr. Cavaci, this was one of the projects where, uh, we were working on getting, and Ms. Imholtz, correct me if I'm wrong. We're, we're working on potentially getting some federal money towards this project. So that's one of the components here as well. Um, you know, if we're not able to get the federal funds, then we need to discuss, you know, other funding options. Uh, but that's a whole nother discussion. Correct me if, if my memory is not serving the correctness, Ms. Imholtz.
That's correct.
Okay. I said, so, but the design and engineering work obviously has to take place. And, and I think it's wise to go ahead and get that part of the project moving forward, because that's, correct me, Mr. Glass, that's going to take several months. So to, to pull that all together. And meanwhile, we'll have our fingers crossed that the federal funds will come in or that we know they'll be approved or likely to be approved.
I know, I am, uh, I'm a fingers crossed always, but, uh, I'm a strong supporter of Ms. Imholtz. She believes it'll happen, and I do believe it tends to.
All right, thank you. Uh, anyone else, which should be heard or asked, um, comments or questions? All right, here, no one else? Uh, if you're ready for the question, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of a word of the contract for the Route twenty-seven Water Main Replacement Project, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, the ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it. And the contract is awarded, thank you, Mr. Glass and Ms. Imholtz. Uh, the next item is adoption of ordinance number nine forty-three. Um, fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-three budget. Ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster, Maryland, approving and adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-two. And ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Ms. Imholtz, is there anything that you'd like to say that hasn't already been said about?
There is, thank you, sir. I want to take this opportunity to thank the mayor and the council for your continued support of me. This took quite a bit of time to put together because we don't have a finance director right now. And because this was my first time putting our budget together. And there were quite a few, um, things we needed to back up and correct in order to put, bring this document forward. Um, this council has taken an extraordinary amount of time to review the budget before you. And I'm incredibly grateful for your continued support on that. And I'm incredibly grateful for your continued support on that.
All right.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much, we have a motion to adopt ordinance number nine forty-three, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget.
Makes a motion to adopt.
A motion by Ms. Gilbert and a second by Mr. Hoff. Uh, is there any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, who had the second, Mr. President?
I, I'll make the second, I don't, I don't know that I did.
I thought you spoke up, I thought I heard you.
No.
You were thinking you were.
I was thinking, Mr. President was anticipating my second, but I was second.
Oh, it was Mr. Dayhoff, well, off day half, I get. Um, sorry, Mr. Dayhoff, all right, well, you will give it to Mr. Hoff.
It's all good.
Very good, all right, and I'll get, and I may have to get hearing aids myself. Any further discussion, any further comments, any further questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi.
I, I guess, I just wanted to make one comment, you know, um, I, I think one of the things that really strikes me in this budget. And it probably comes from the fact that I was around for a number of years, as I know you were as well. Um, when we didn't give raises for year over year over year, I think there were three or four years. Where compensation remained perfectly flat. Now, there also wasn't as much inflation as there is now, but there was still inflation, there was still cost of living increases happening at that time. But the budget just couldn't support it, and, you know, I, I, I don't love spending any more money than we absolutely have to. I think everybody's eminently aware of that, but in this particular case, I, I'm pretty proud of the fact that we're in a position. And when I say I'm proud, I don't mean myself, I'm, it's, it's, it's a, it's a really good thing, I think, that we're able to demonstrate to the, um. That the staff who does such good work for the city, um, how much we value them, because the reality is. You know, when you put it all together, at least for this year, it's a pretty significant number, um, that, uh, that we're putting in there. And that's in no small part due to Ms. M. Holes's efforts, you know, she, she has, uh, worked very hard to. Uh, you know, m- make that possible in the budget and, and convince us that it was an important thing to do. Not that it took a lot of convincing, because I think we all agree, the staff does a wonderful job, but I, I, I think it's, uh, it really sticks out to me that, that's, uh, that's not chump change. Um, yeah, when you run the math for the average employee, that's a pretty significant amount of money. And, uh, I just wanted to point that out and give Ms. M. Holes kudos, because I know it was very important for her. That we did as much as we could for the staff who's working so hard to do such a good job. So, that's, that's it, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kavachi, and, uh, you know, I echo those, those remarks and also just add that, uh. You know, as you said, you know, you and I are both here, and so was Mr. Dayhoff at one point, when we had to make some very tough decisions. And, you know, we had some lean years for the city, but through, you know, I think very careful management and some, some tough decisions. We're in a much stronger position now, uh, you know, in large part due to, to those decisions we made, but also. Due to the fact that, you know, over the last year, you know, we've had a significant influx of some federal funds. Which have made, you know, some other things possible, which we appreciate. Um, you know, that, uh, you know, we've got that opportunity, and so it is gr- it is great to be able to, in a time when, you know, inflation has hit, you know. You know, over a short period of time, you know, uh, seven, eight percent, that we're able to, uh, recognize. The cost of living has, has increased for our employees and, and do something for them to help mitigate that. And to, um, you know, to help them out, as well as be able to continue to do all the things that we need to be doing as a city. For the citizens of Westminster, so I'm pleased that we're able to do that as well.
Mr. Hoff. Um, I just wanted to comment, this was my first time on the finance committee, as well as on council going through a budget. And, uh, it was a great learning opportunity for, for me, I, I have a background in accounting, so obviously that's helpful. Uh, but it's been a while since, uh, I, I was in college, so, um, uh, though I do a lot of that in my, in my other life as well. Um, what, a couple of comments I will make, I, I was really impressed with the fact, my understanding is that it wasn't done like this before. That we're taking such a hard look at our capital plan, uh, over a five-year period of time, I think that's really important. It gives us a good, uh, planning tool to kind of plan for the future. Uh, and, and the other thing that I kind of hit on before, and, uh, Mr. President, you kind of hit on during your, your comments is. I'm very impressed with the fact that, that each of us individually, as well as collectively, as well as staff. Is trying to leverage different relationships that we may have to help bring funds into Westminster. That otherwise our citizens would have to come up with, uh, to be able to get some really important projects done. Uh, whether that be the clock tower, or making progress on Wakefield Valley, or, you know, uh, water or sewer-related projects. Um, so, I really, I, I haven't been here before, but I feel like that there is a lot of, uh, good, long-term thinking going on. Uh, at least when I'm in the finance committee meetings and on council, uh, working with staff on trying to. Uh, kind of have a plan of where we're headed and incrementally implement that. Um, so, I, I've been very impressed with that, uh, those are my only, uh, comments, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. Anyone else, here are no one else. Move on to a vote, all those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, the ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the ordinance and the budget are adopted, thank you all very much. And Ms. M. Holes, again, thank you for a terrific job, well done. Uh, next item on the agenda is unfinished business, there is no unfinished business of which I'm aware. Does anybody have any unfinished business to put in for the council? If none, we'll move on to the next item, which is new business, Mr. Kavachi.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that the common council adjourn to a closed meeting on Monday, May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. In accordance with the general provisions of article, provisions article of the annotated code of Maryland. S-three dash three oh five subsection B ten to discuss the public security in the public bot. If the public body determines that public discussion would constitute a risk to the public or public security. Including subsection I, the deployment of fire and police services and staff. And subsection two, the depo- the depo- development and implementation of emergency plans, public safety update. Sorry about the stumbling nature of that.
That's all right, thank you, Mr. Kavachi, may I have a second, please?
I'll second, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoff, we have a motion by Mr. Kavachi and a second by Mr. Hoff. Going to a closed session for conclusion, uh, regular meeting, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, the ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and, uh, it is so ordered.
It's a little, little different than, uh, what I'm used to reading, I got a little foul dog at that time.
Change in upon us.
Yeah, what'd you throw me, curveball here?
Uh, now time for departmental reports, now we turn to our city administrator, Ms. M. Holes.
Mr. Kavat- Councilmember Kavachi, that demonstrates to us the significance of having the city clerk in the building. We sent him to a, a conference, and I may talk to the conference folks next year to make sure it, it doesn't conflict with the council leader.
That's all right, we made it through, as long as we saw, we were good.
I'm a poor substitute for the city clerk. Um, I want to take another moment to thank the mayor and council for adopting the fiscal year twenty-three budget. Um, there are a lot of exciting things that staff is very excited about. The staff, as you mentioned, is so hardworking, they have made it through COVID, the first round, COVID, the second round. COVID, the third round, without missing a beat. Uh, they continue to be as frugal as possible, to find creative ways to solve problems without spending money. And that has, in addition to all the other rea- reasons that you've outlined, also helped put us in this situation. And to be able to provide them with a small token of our appreciation, I, I'm so grateful that you supported that suggestion. Um, and, you know, this is, this is a great place to work, and this is an example, one of many of why that is. We're going to move on to departmental reports, just like to remind everybody that the next council meeting is on June twenty-seventh. So the reports we're giving to you now will be from today, everybody, until June twenty-seventh. Uh, we're going to start off with the parks and recreation, the recreation and parks department. They've got quite a few events happening between now and the twenty-seventh of June, so let's start there, Ms. Gilbert.
Good evening, I would like to first, uh, thank you, mayor and council for your continued support of the recreation and parks department. As shown through the approval of the fiscal year twenty-three budget, we are so energized and excited to be getting, um, so many. Legacy projects underway, that's what's very important to us. I never, uh, dreamed that I would be still here when this much progress was occurring at Wakefield. So, um, it's just really amazing that that's happening. And also to be investing in the valuable resource that is our community pool. Um, we know that this summer will be very hard for our citizens to not have that amenity at their disposal. Um, however, we are extremely eager to open up with a new and improved facility at the beginning of next full season. So, thank you for your ongoing support, most of all, thank you for your investment in my staff, our staff. Because I certainly, um, rely intensely upon them for everything that they do. And there is a lot that is asked of not only my staff, but the entire city staff. Um, when we produce events and when we go into projects such as, um, one of the first things coming up in my report. Is, of course, we will be holding the pre-construction meeting for the exterior renovations of the Durbin House. Um, that will happen on Wednesday, we're eager to get that project underway, um, but it is a team effort. So the invite went out today to many people on Jeff's team, um, to sit in on that meeting. So that we're all making sure that that project makes good forward progress. So it's never just one department, and that's what's so special about this city, it's all of us always pulling together and working together. And you guys standing behind us, just helping us every step of the way, so, thank you for that. Um, so, Durbin House meeting will happen on Wednesday. The final phase of our locker room renovation is wrapping up earlier than anticipated. Thursday and Friday of this week, we'll have the installation finally of those, uh, new metal lockers that have been backordered forever. So we're very excited to finish that project up. Um, our first annual pickleball tournament, pickle in the park, is happening on June fourth and fifth. We are anxious to host over one hundred and fifty preregistered pickleball players for this inaugural event. Um, so we will be playing singles on June fourth and doubles tournament on June fifth. Uh, we are working through the bracketing today, T-shirt order, all of those final details to tie a nice little bow on this event. So, what was that?
A council team.
Well, there's that. So, but registration is closed.
So there isn't that option, okay. Let's make it, there isn't that.
When they do the drinking pickle in the, in the, in the park event, I'm in.
So we are very anxious to be hosting that first ever tournament. Um, our twelve-week summer camp program starts on June fourteenth. We are transitioning our building from a fitness center only to a fitness center and home base for our camp program. So we're anxious to live in up the building with all of our little campers. Uh, following on the heels of that, obviously, is the beer barbecue stroll, as Councilman Dayhoff mentioned, on June eighteenth. And I did forget one other event, which is our daddy-daughter date night, that is the Wednesday prior to Father's Day, which is June fifteenth. So, a lot going on in the recreation and parks department, and that concludes my report, unless there are questions.
Seeing no questions, we will move on to the public works department, Mr. Glass.
Uh, yes, ma'am, um, two things, the first one is, uh, we unfortunately had a water main break on Saturday morning, on the Jenny Drive. Worked out, uh, um, actually to everyone's benefit except five homes. Uh, but there were a number of hours that we could, uh, isolate the, the, uh, the issue, and only five people were out of service during that time. Which was about three hours or so, um, that's just a testament to work, good work from the utility maintenance department. Um, but that was wrapped up pretty quickly, so that was, that was a really good thing. Um, I also would like to thank the council for their support for the fiscal year twenty-three budget. Um, my opinion, this amounts to one of the most progressive and robust budgets in my tenure. And.
Let's see, it's all.
They mentioned that it took, uh, um, many hands to help form the budget, and while I agree with that, don't be fooled. This budget belongs to Sarah M. Holes. She works all the time, late hours at night, early hours in the morning. And, um, I want to express my appreciation, um, to Sarah as well, I, and I think I can say this, that, uh. That everyone could be as proud of her as I, and I think we are, so.
We'll get your bonus later.
Checks in the mail.
Did you have anything else to report?
Oh, gosh, that was, uh, that was it.
Forty budgets, you looked at, right?
Been the number, yes.
That's pretty pleasant. Seeing no questions for public works, we'll move on to planning and how you follow that up, Mr. Dayhoff.
No, it's, it's different.
She's got flowers under that desk.
But before I get to the commission updates, I do want to thank Mayor Common Council as well. For your support with the planning staff and the economic development activities that we are working on with the fiscal twenty-three budget. It is greatly appreciated, and Sarah as well, thank you very much for spearheading some of those efforts. Um, on May eleventh, the historic district commission updated and approved its, its, um, archiving information requirements for properties located in historic districts. So they did adopt or approve new guidelines that we are going to get out to the webpage. On June first, the historic district commission is tentatively scheduled to hear a tax credit request for home improvements. And in addition, at seventy-two West Green Street. On May eighteenth, the planning commission and zoning commission approved site development plan S twenty-one sixteen, as Councilman Hoff mentioned. And thank you for pointing out the architecture that is very important as we get new projects in, that we are meeting the design preference manual that the mayor and council did adopt. And making sure that we're getting better than just their standard, uh, developer plans. And I think being out back did come out really nice, it was a nice project. Um, the, um, on June ninth, the planning commission is scheduled to hear the two annexation applications for four, for Malcolm. And the state's attorney's office, as well as the ordinance, uh, for microbreweries in the PI zoning district. And the, in June, the board zone appeals is tentatively scheduled to hear a variance request to construct a detached garage. In the required rear and side yard setbacks at ninety-nine North Ralph Street. And that completes my report, if you have any questions.
Mr. Depot, can you somehow get out back to get their exhaust to head in the opposite direction of my house? I'm trying to stay under four hundred pounds.
I will see that to be right. You're a big fan out there.
Exactly.
No more questions, but the planning department will move on to the human resources department, Ms. McCullough.
Good evening, um, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for the various ways they have supported the personnel through the FY twenty-three budget. Uh, thank you very much. Um, as Ms. M. Holes had mentioned in her presentation, we have three new equipment operator positions. Uh, in the streets department, and those positions will be posted this week. So, um, please visit our website, um, and also HR is recruiting for various other, um, positions. As Ms. Gilbert mentioned, um, across all departments. And again, visit our website, stay tuned, um, please apply. Um, open enrollment season for our benefits is underway. And at, on Friday of this week, the twenty-seventh, um, employee should, um, if you have any changes. You should submit your, um, enrollment applications for any changes. Uh, but Friday, May twenty-seventh is the last day to submit changes. Um, let's see. That completes my report.
Are there any questions for the human resources department? Seeing none, we'll move on to the housing department, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Ms. M. Holes. Like my colleagues, I'd like to take this opportunity to express my gratitude and my department's gratitude to the mayor and council. For what you have done for the department with the adoption of your, of this, this upcoming fiscal year's budget. A budget reflects priorities and values, and we're glad to see that, uh, our department, as well as the staff in general. Is a priority and that you do value them. The other, the other thing I want to do is to alert the council, I think I've made this once before. That today, we. that today we emailed out the rental registration, um, invoices to all of the landlords that we have on record. And the actual hard copies will be going out later this week. Uh, mid-June, we will be sending a re- email reminder so that it doesn't slip anyone's mind, uh, that their license expires on the thirtieth of June. That's all I have today.
Are there any questions for the Housing Department? We will wrap things up tonight with the Police Department. Chief Lebov?
Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, just like all of, uh, the other department directors, I would like to sincerely thank you, not only for your support during this budget process, but also in general, ongoing for the Police Department and for our public safety goals here in Westminster. And I can honestly tell you that, uh, the staff, the department, the police officers feel it. So we sincerely thank you for that. Um, also, I'd like to echo what Director Glass, uh, said about Ms. Inhals. I feel like there is, uh, an excitement, uh, within the staff, uh, for our vision for the future. And I think we're finding through Ms. Inhals' leadership innovative ways to make it happen. So I, I like that direction we're heading, so appreciate that, Ms. Inhals.
Thank you.
Um, to echo upon, uh, with, uh, or to expand upon what Councilman, uh, Cavaci talked about earlier, we did put on a body-on-camera presentation for our, uh, both our program and our policy at the Community Focus Group, which is virtual. And anyone in the community is, uh, free to join our, uh, monthly meeting. It's on Wednesday evening, uh, once a month. All you need to do is either email myself or Major Gibson, or just call in and we will get you connected. And, um, we did submit, uh, a brief overview for the next city newsletter regarding our program. Um, and, uh, what it entails. We also have, all of our policies are hyperlinked on the city website. So we have a public-facing portal, and anybody in the community can go in there and read through our policies, including our body-on-camera policy, and see what it's all about and, um, what we have to do to make it work. Uh, we also, in addition to the, um, other burglar arrests, we just served an arrest warrant on Mr. Cody, I think his last name is pronounced, Bush. He's a thirty-year-old we arrested on, uh, a warrant charging him with, uh, possession of stolen property from a commercial burglary on North Center Street. So this was a result of officers, uh, being able to recover his latent fingerprints on stolen property that we recovered. So, um, I think they did a good job in, um, tracing that one down. Um, I believe that's all I have for you.
That concludes the reports, Mr. President.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry, we've forgotten the fire report.
No report.
No report. That concludes the staff reports. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you, uh, Ms. Inhals. And before we turn to the last item on our agenda, since, uh, she's not here with us, uh, able to speak up as easily, I want to turn to, uh, Mayor Becker and see if she has any final comments this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd just like to add on a little bit echoing some of the department heads' comments, uh, and some of my own comments, uh, regarding the budget. I know, uh, first of all, thank you, um, to council for the adoption of the budget and the discussions that we've had over the last couple of weeks regarding the issues in the budget. Um, but I, I do want to, uh, emphasize and sort of reiterate a little bit on some of the comments from the department heads. Um, I know for those of us who have served on the council in the past, um, and although I don't have the years of experience as a few of the council members, uh, sitting council members this year, um, you know, the, the budget document that identifies how we're going to move forward over the next year. Uh, this year, to me, seemed a very different process than sometimes in the past. Um, and again, I wanted to give a, uh, large, a big shout out to, uh, Ms. Inhals, our city administrator, um, in really taking into account, uh, this year, how I felt, the concerns of the departments, uh, the superintendents, and putting together, um, the approach to the budget, as Councilman Hoff had mentioned. Um, you know, with the, um, the capital improvement, um, plan fund that enables us to sort of look forward, uh, five years, so much more easier than we've been able to in the past with a, with a budget document. Uh, and so I think that this budget, not only for this year, is just a fantastic document, but also, uh, can serve to help as sort of like a street map, uh, for the next several years as we move forward through this process. Um, you know, and Mr. Glass was absolutely correct that, um, you know, there were nights, I know, uh, where both Sarah or Ms. Inhals and, and Ms., uh, Gardner were working till three AM in the morning or, you know, every weekend, um, you know, and it sort of came habit to drive by the office if her lights were on, you know, to text her that it was time to go home or something like that. Because, um, this document was all-consuming for the last several months. Now that it's done, we're ready to move forward on a lot of other things, and I think that, uh, we'll have the energy to do that. Um, but again, thank you to everyone for their hard work, uh, going into this budget. Thank you to the council, uh, for their support, um, and adoption of the budget this evening. And again, um, their, their discussions and, um, interactions over the last several weeks. Um, that's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Becker. Um, the final item on our agenda this evening is citizens' comments. When we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues pertaining to tonight's agenda or any other city issue. Let me remind everyone that, um, well, citizens not attending the public meeting, we invite you to send your comments or concerns via email at comments@westminstermd.gov. Uh, by email, uh, all comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. Commenters, uh, who write in to us should include their address and phone number with their comments. I will now invite comments from anyone who is present here this evening. Let me remind everyone that this is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts and concerns, and not for an exchange in debate or answer questions from the council. We, we, because in most cases, we probably won't be in a position to answer those questions at this time. I'd also encourage everyone to keep their remarks as brief and succinct as possible. And, uh, with that, is there anyone with us tonight who wishes to be heard? If you do, please give your name and address for the record. Anyone who wishes to be heard? Uh, yes, sir.
Hi, everyone, I'm Colin Hartley, and I'm with, uh, Twenty-Nine Washington Road. It's the house, caucy for Maggie's with the broken porch. Um, so I acquired that property, uh, about four months ago, and I wanted to give a little update on it. And, uh, letting you know that the front porch is getting worked on, thanks to, uh, Mark Defoe and all the, uh, great support and, uh, help and, which also wanted me to recognize you and just say what you all are doing individually, as individuals and together as a staff. Just amazing. I just got so much excitement building up, and, uh, never been to one of these, but I loved it. And, uh, it was really exciting to see what you're all doing behind the scenes and, uh, I loved it. But yeah, so the history, uh, of, uh, the renovations, it's almost done. Uh, so it's going to be beautiful again, and I wanted to also come in and talk about the history of the house. Uh, Lindy, uh, McDolte and, uh, Mr. De Hoff have been loving involved in, uh, Lindy very involved in, uh, um, discovering the history of it, being like an underground railroad and just amazing history, uh, that I'm for preserving, like anything that I found in the house, uh, like papers and, uh, Civil War. Like, um, the, one of the, one of the black members of the family was like one of the first, and then one of the first black regiments in the Civil War. And it's just, uh, some beautiful stuff, the Underground Railroad and, uh, founding the Elsor Cemetery. This Elsor Cemetery, uh, one of the founding members levered the house. Oh, yeah, and, uh, Yes, and they found, uh, one of the things that'll anyone would be coming here also, uh, was found like the, like the names of like so many people that lived at the cemetery, like a whole roadmap of like people that lived there. Uh, so we're, uh, we, I just connected with Audrey and some of the people that are discovering, uh, the gravestones and whether part of that amazing event. And, uh, we're, I'm, I'm helping them and trying to uncover the whole story and just find all the names and get the grave sites and just shed light to all the amazing history that we have in this. I love Westminster, in this, in this city. But yeah, that's all I have.
Great. Thank you very much. Ms. McDolte, thank you for joining us. Nice to see you representing our alma mater there.
I have one small comment.
Yes, please.
I have a
Uh, please, could you just
Livingdolty195, West Manchester. I have a small award. I did a, um, a peep painting for the Peep Show in honor of the P five K that I'm going to give to President Pecoraro. So when he restores somebody to put this over the mantle, since he was the thought of the P point five K.
Thank you so much. Why, it's great for participating.
That is great.
Um, I want to thank, uh, yeah, thank, uh, Ms. Gruber for making it possible for us to do that. This is fun to have.
That's really cool.
It is. Thank you very much.
Good stuff.
We'll put it here in the mayor's place for now.
I love that.
Anyone else who wishes to be heard tonight? Yes, sir, Dr. Smith?
From Dan College to College Hill. Um, I didn't hear a mention about, and this is exciting to me, Dan College is supportive of this. The first Juneteenth celebration is happening in Westminster on, uh, June eighteen. There's the beer festival as well, good beer stroll as well. So I just wanted to make that note.
Oh, thank you. All right, well, we will have to get, uh,
Arts Center, I believe?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, PM. All right, well, we'll make sure that everybody has information on that.
Should have mentioned it.
Very good, okay. All right.
Barbecue Festival, if I can just, is from Bond and John up to Center and Main. Center and Main. And then Juneteenth will be on the other side of the intersection of John and Bond, down to Carroll Arts Center. It's, it's actually
I think it's from Carroll Street to Anchor.
Carroll Street to Anchor.
Okay.
So you'll be able to come down by the, I'll sing with it. You'll be able, that little block that's in, yep, to, to drive on.
Good, so we'll be able to get back and forth.
Easily get back and forth to both restaurants.
That's great. Okay.
Yeah.
And of course, um, we were missing not mentioning that, uh, Monday will be the Memorial Day Parade. Here in town, one of the oldest of the nation, and looking forward to, uh, participating in that once again. Mayor, are you going to be able to walk in the parade? Heck no. Are we gonna, we're gonna wheel you down Main Street, or what are we gonna do?
Just gonna give her a piggyback ride.
I got a rickshaw.
Give me a piggyback ride?
Rickshaw.
Rickshaw, yeah, no, I will not be able to walk, but, um, I will be participating in the parade. We have yet to, uh, work out the transportation with that yet.
All right, well, we'll look forward to hearing more about that later. All right, well, thank you very much.
I have a twenty-nine, I have a twenty-nine.
All right, well, that concludes our agenda in the meeting. And, uh, as the city minister mentioned earlier, uh, we will be, um, canceling our next meeting, our regular, our, it was on the second Monday in June, uh, we will be attending the Maryland Municipal League concert. And so, uh, our next meeting will be June twenty-third? Seven, twenty-seven, thank you very much. Next meeting will be June twenty-seven. And with that, without objection, we are adjourned. Thanks very much.